Good evening or good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Virginia City Council Chambers. This is a special notice of public hearing. Call this public hearing to order. Today's date is Tuesday, January 14, 2025. The time is 4:30 p.m. Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Virginia, Minnesota, and the Virginia Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public meeting Tuesday, January 14, 2025, at or after 4:30 p.m. at the Virginia City Hall Council Chambers, 327 First Street South, related to the proposed ordinance, Section 8, Chapter 20, entitled "Regulating Cannabis Business Ordinance," and Section 11.13, Chapter 11, Land Use Zoning Regulations, Amending Zoning District Regulations for Cannabis Businesses. A copy of the proposed ordinance is on file and available for public inspection during regular business hours at the Office of the City Clerk at the City Hall of the City of Virginia, Minnesota, 327 First Street South, Virginia, Minnesota, and on the city's website at www.virginiamn.us. That's www.virginiamn.us. All interested parties may appear at the public hearing and present their views orally or in writing. And this was posted in the New York Tribune on 1/2 of '25 and again on 1/8 of '25. We have a presenter today that's going to give us some information regarding the cannabis law to help us and the public be more informed. I've had the opportunity to hear a presentation by Kristin Swanson from the St. Louis County Attorney's Office, and she'll be providing that with us today. Before we move forward, I would ask anyone who is going to be attending this public hearing today, or may want to speak or not want to speak, would ask you to please sign in at the desk at the entrance, if you would please, at your convenience. Pam, related to this public hearing, have you received any written correspondence of testimony for this hearing?
No, I have not, Mayor.
Have you received any emails or any other data or any other written oral correspondence related to this public hearing?
I have not, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So we have the full quorum present here of the council, and I think we'll start with the public hearing with the presentation by Kristin Swanson from the St. Louis County Attorney's Office. Kristin, I just want to welcome you to this public hearing and thank you for agreeing to, on such short notice, to come and provide a presentation to us about the cannabis regulations, the laws, and some of the changes that have been more recent, and then what St. Louis County is doing and the ordinance they have adopted. And I've had the opportunity to hear your presentation. It is extremely informative, so we look forward to hearing from you now. So Kristin, welcome.
... moment with my PowerPoint presentation, so I apologize.
While Kristin is gearing up the presentation, we did receive -- pardon? We have some heart comms. We, as a council, received an email from Britt C. Bennis, our city administrator, regarding some of the Minnesota Office of Cannabis Management's notice of intent to adopt expedited rules without them holding a public hearing. So we have that, and we can put that for the record, and anybody would like to take a look in the copies with respect to that, this is certainly we're able to do. And so as this being information of the presentation we uploaded, there's a few pieces of information that the Minnesota Office of Cannabis Management intends to adopt rules under the expedited rulemaking process following the rules of the Office of Administration Hearing Minnesota Rules, Part 1, 400.2410, in the Administrative Procedures Act, Minnesota Statute, Section 14.389. The proposed expedited rules may be viewed at the OCM Rulemaking Website. That's the Office of Cannabis Management Rulemaking Website and web page starting Monday, January 13. And we may submit any written comments on the proposed expedited rules until 4:30 p.m. on Wednesday, February 12, 2025. And those of you probably listening at home on YouTube and those who are in the audience today, if you have, we need any more information about how to access that if you wish to do so, please don't hesitate to contact our city clerk, Pamela Bean, at 218-749-3579. That's 218-749-3579. And these proposed expedited rules are designed to regulate the adult-use cannabis, medical cannabis, hemp-derived consumer products, and lower potency hemp-derived edibles markets in Minnesota. The rules cover all parts of the licensee activities, including application, cultivation, manufacture, packing, labeling, transportation, sale, delivery, record-keeping, testing, and office processes, oversight, and enforcement. And there's some additional statutory issues there, but the goal and objective is to use this process to make rules without having to hold a public hearing. Anything else, Pam, that you may want to proffer as we -- any information you want to disseminate or share?
We do have a printout of the presentation from the Assistant Attorney. We also have a letter from the police chief regarding her suggestions on the proposed ordinance.
And so as we're doing this, for the general's public certification, is it in the packet that's on the table today, the chief's letter?
In the packet on the table is everything regarding the process, maps in the city with the proposed 1,000 feet, 500 feet, several different options from Jenny, and then also the guide for local governments on cannabis from the Office of Cannabis.
Okay, and thank you. And the letter that's being proffered by our Chief of Police is as follows. The Honorable Mayor Cuffey, members of the City Council and the City Administrator referencing the cannabis ordinance, with the Office of Cannabis Management moving forward with licensing of both adult-use cannabis and low potency hemp businesses, it is important that our city enact this ordinance so law enforcement can locally educate, monitor, and perform compliance checks on the licensed cannabis businesses. The City of Virginia ordinance should closely resemble that of St. Louis County, so we have a consistency and uniform understanding of the local laws. A significant point of the St. Louis County ordinance from the Chiefs of Police perspective is no cannabis retail business will be allowed to operate within 1,000 feet of a school or within 500 feet of a licensed daycare, residential treatment facility, or a public park that is regularly used by minors. In pursuant to statute, the county is required to approve registrations for at least one licensed cannabis retail business per 12,500 residents, and this will be part of Kristin's presentation. Based on the number of residents living in the area where St. Louis County has zoning authority, that means the county will grant approval to three such retail businesses. Use of cannabis will be banned in public parks or government-owned leased or controlled lands, as well as any indoor places where smoking is banned. It should be noted that with the legalization of the hemp-related edible cannabinoids, law enforcement was to perform limited inspection checks on dosing, packaging, and labeling complaints, as we were only allowed to file them with the Minnesota Board of Pharmacy. The new cannabis ordinance gives our police department local authority to monitor these new businesses and keep the public safe. I think as we move forward, we'll have the opportunity for the public to also weigh in, ask some questions for some clarity. The council will also weigh in and have some questions and comments with respect to the ordinance, and that includes the mayor as well. So Brian, our city attorney, anything to add before we move forward?
Nothing at this point, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsey.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize, but we're going to have to -- Here. The county computer is not playing nicely with other computer systems and networks, it would appear. I noted that to your city administrator that at one point over the last several weeks, the county software update involved removing the Zoom application for my computer, which I use to attend court hearings, so that was minorly problematic. So I apologize that you won't see the visual of this.
Okay, for those who are in the audience, if you want to follow along as Kristin makes our presentation, there's a packet available for you to follow with the guidelines established. So thanks again. And so we look forward to the presentation. Thank you.
Switched to red, so I thought that meant something exciting was happening. It's not. So again, thank you all very much for inviting me to speak here today. My name's Kristin Swanson, an Assistant St. Louis County Attorney. I've been with St. Louis County since 2010. Prior to that, I worked in Nicollet County for five years, and one of my current assignments is working with the Planning and Zoning Department, and I was part of a village of people who worked together to get up to speed on the cannabis legislation that passed in 2024, which significantly modified what had been passed in 2023, and to work together to establish initially the moratorium, which applied countywide, and then, of course, the county ordinance that applies to areas within our planning and zoning authority, which was enacted and effective, effective, rather, on January 1 of 2025. As I mentioned, there were significant changes when cannabis was envisioned for initial legalization in 2023, and there were modifications made in the 2024 legislative session, which some were very favorable for local units of government, others were a little more -- added some layers of complexity. Initially in 2023, one of the requirements was that a local unit of government would have an opportunity to review an application and provide detailed feedback to the Office of Cannabis Management as to whether or not a license should be granted. The local unit of government could provide feedback involving public data available regarding the applicant. There would be requirements for compliance checks, and Mr. Mayor did reference that earlier. The previous legislation would require law enforcement to do these compliance checks and, in essence, be subject matter experts about packaging and contents, in essence, amateur chemists, so to speak. And the rollout for the licensing of all retail and non-retail businesses was to be January 1 of 2025, and as we all sit here, we know this is -- that has not occurred. The legislative changes in 2024 provided that the Office of Cannabis Management would do an initial review and issue provisional licenses of applications, and then the local unit of government would issue the registration if the business location was consistent with ordinances, including any options for time, place, and manner restrictions that I'll go through here shortly. There is not an option any longer for a local unit of government to give feedback outside of the time, place, and manner restrictions relative to an applicant. And compliance checks, however, did improve. One of the minor things that did improve in this legislation for 2024, which is law enforcement no longer has to do product verification in terms of reading the back of packages, ingredients, dosages, to determine if what the license issued by the Office of Cannabis Management is consistent with what is being sold in a very specific sense. Generally, yes, but ingredient contents are no longer required to be inspected by law enforcement or whomever does your compliance checks, which was a huge victory for law enforcement and units of government in having to comply with the requirements. There had been a lottery scheduled for, I think, November 24th or 25th, right around Thanksgiving, for those social equity applicants and for those licenses which were subject to statewide caps through 2026. In the days leading up to that scheduled lottery, the Office of Cannabis Management was subject to several lawsuits, I think approximately five or six, which resulted in an injunction being issued in Ramsey County District Court, which has stopped the procedure at this point for social equity lottery licenses being selected. It's anticipated that the demand for licenses will exceed what the statewide caps are for the various license types, and a lottery was legislated as part of the process to determine who would get these initial licenses. Since that social equity lottery can't take place pending ruling of the Minnesota Court of Appeals, those have been put on pause. The recent communications from the Office of Cannabis Management indicates that they're hoping to do a social equity and general license lottery sometime in the spring, pending outcome of some of these legal challenges.
Mayor, can we ask questions, or should we wait till the presentation has concluded?
Whatever makes sense for you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So not to disrupt your presentation, but counsel freely.
Quick definition of social equity.
So social equity is defined in statute. It's in Chapter 342. That is, it sets forth certain criteria for various applicants, and because counties don't review applicants, I'm going to be real honest, I don't have this committed to memory like I do the other sections, because I focus primarily on areas for local units of government to take action. Social equity applicants could submit an application that was reviewed by the Office of Cannabis Management if they were part of either a protected class, prior convictions directly, or as part of their family to -- of past controlled substance crimes, veterans, minorities, women-owned businesses. Brian is fact-checking me, which I super appreciate. This is not Facebook.
Yes, Mr. Lindsey.
What I'm doing, I'm going to try and pull the statute that I can disprove.
Great. So that covers some of the broad categories.
Thank you, Counsel Free. Please continue. Thank you. I'm sorry. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just saw you had mentioned, due to the court case, it's going into appellate court, and no licenses, whether it's social equity or regular licensure, would be able to be issued until the spring of 2025. Is that correct?
That's as scheduled right now. That does not apply to lower potency hemp edible retailers who were authorized to be in operation under the previous Department of Health rules from the 2023 legislation as part of the rulemaking process, which is just being initiated, the first draft, as Mayor Cuffee referenced earlier, is part of that process, but the complete rollover from those who are authorized to sell lower potency hemp edibles under the pre-existing statutory framework will not have to transfer their license to a license type covered by Chapter 342 until the summer of 2026.
Okay, so you're referencing the high potency or the low dose?
High potency is not a separate category in Chapter 342. Lower potency hemp edibles are the things you could buy at the gas station, at the grocery store, or other shops that are currently open and operating for business statewide at this point.
So those will be still available? The high potency will not be available till after the litigation?
The...
Or is there no differentiation?
There is a differentiation in terms of the license type issued by the Office of Cannabis Management, for which local units of government have no role in terms of the license type. The types of products that are sold, that are currently being sold in gas stations and grocery stores, can continue to be sold under the previous Department of Health licensure until the rulemaking process is completed and it rolls over into the same regulation as Chapter 342 in 2026.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Paulson. Okay, thank you.
So the Office of Cannabis Management is essentially, for lack of a better term, the boss of all of us. They are responsible for the application process, the approval process, they decide who gets a license, who does not get a license, they monitor the product contents, packaging, testing, labeling, warning labels, potency limits, in terms of something qualifying as a lower potency hemp edible product, as opposed to something that has a higher threshold and qualifies as a cannabis product specifically. That's all within the wheelhouse of the Office of Cannabis Management. They also approve product types, assess civil penalties, and they do provide the oversight of the medical cannabis program. The Office of Cannabis Management, when it issues a license to a business after going through their approval process at the state level, the individual or entity then comes to the local unit of government, they have that license, and the local unit of government shall issue the registration or renewal if it complies with zoning laws. So if someone has a license in hand from the state and they show up in St. Louis County to register their business, they comply with zoning requirements, and when I say St. Louis County, I mean those areas for which St. Louis County proper has planning and zoning authority. If someone came to -- has a business license authorized in the City of Virginia and they come to register their business, we shall issue the registration. So the St. Louis County Board enacted a moratorium that applied countywide in scope in July of 2024. That moratorium expired at 11:59 p.m. on December 31. St. Louis County Ordinance 68, which represents the action taken by the St. Louis County Board to regulate cannabis businesses in those areas for which we have planning and zoning authority, went into effect on January 1, 2025, for which no licenses are being issued by the Office of Cannabis Management at this time. As I mentioned, lotteries are tentatively scheduled for May of 2025. There are ruling license application deadlines that are currently identified on the Office of Cannabis Management website, but again, depending on what the outcome is of the social equity litigation that's presently before the Minnesota Court of Appeals or subsequent litigation that could be brought, those timelines could change. The early expedited rulemaking process has begun. Public comments, of course, are available until mid-February, as referenced by Mayor Cuffee, and then additional rulemaking that is not in the expedited process will continue into 2026. So local units of government are in a position of having to take action to put an ordinance in place, unfortunately, before all of the pieces to the puzzle are available. The definitions from the St. Louis County Cannabis Ordinance come from Minnesota Statute, Chapter 342, is amended in 2024, and this may sound like I am repeating myself, and I am doing so intentionally. St. Louis County has no desire to supplant the authority of any of the municipalities within the county who exercise their own planning and zoning authority. So the St. Louis County Ordinance that has been enacted only applies to those cities and towns, townships, that do not exercise their own planning and zoning authority. Your municipality exercises its own planning and zoning authority, and as others similarly situated, will need to take action to regulate the cannabis industry in terms of time, place, and manner restrictions authorized by statute. It was an important component for the county, for everyone to understand that while the moratorium was countywide to allow everyone to catch up on the new legislation from 2024, we have no desire to make decisions for your own municipalities. You're in a better position to do so than we are. One of the topics of the St. Louis County Ordinance addresses public use and consumption. That was, I believe, referenced in the letter from the police chief as well. Minnesota Statute 152.0263, subdivision 5, does allow a local unit of government to adopt an ordinance establishing a petty misdemeanor offense for an individual who unlawfully uses certain product types, including lower potency hemp edibles, cannabis flower products, in a public place. That statute goes on to define what a public place is not. It does not tell you what a public place is, however. After much discussion, the language that was adopted by St. Louis County includes the language from the Minnesota Clean Air Act is reflected in Minnesota Statute, Chapter 144. I believe that was also referenced in the letter from the police chief, including enclosed areas used by the general public. So the Clean Air Act applies primarily to indoor spaces where people gather and congregate. What it doesn't address are more outdoor areas where people may come together and gather. And this language was added to the St. Louis County Ordinance, including a public park or any other property owned, leased, or controlled by a governmental unit. There were concerns expressed about folks who may be ingesting these products on county property outside, inside the courthouse, and other county properties across the vast expanse of county-owned facilities. So that language was added. Time, place, and manner restrictions are specified in Chapter 342 in terms of areas you can act. Now, the Office of Cannabis Management has, in essence, occupied the field, so to speak, not to talk too lawyerly, but Mr. Lindsey can translate into more general terms on my behalf. This legislation is massive, it's very detailed, and it's very specific about where the state is in charge and the options that a local unit of government has to determine how and where businesses that are registered in a jurisdiction can operate. The options for local units of government to regulate these types of businesses are very small, and I think that was a very big surprise to most everyone when legalization initially came to be in 2023. came to be in 2023 to where we are now. So Minnesota Statute 34213 allows a local unit of government to limit active retail registration businesses to one per 12,500 residents. That doesn't apply to every type of cannabis business. The statute specifies that it only applies to certain retail businesses. Cannabis retailer, cannabis mezzo business with retail operations endorsement, please don't ask me what any of these mean, nobody's really sure, it is defined in the statute, however. I'm glad that the Office of Cannabis Management decides what meets that criteria, and not me, in a cannabis microbusiness with the retail operations endorsement. So if someone comes to you with a license for, issued by the Office of Cannabis Management, with one of those designations, and there is a retail registration cap within your ordinance, you can limit that to one per 12,500. The preferred method of calculation of that population limit is the Minnesota State Demographers' Office, which I assume will be covered in the rulemaking. That method of calculation was discussed by the Office of Cannabis Management at one of its various webinars. So it's not the census, and there are some differences, actually. The overall number that resulted, at least for the St. Louis County area of planning and zoning authority, didn't change. I can't say that would be the same necessarily for your city. Also, oh, go ahead, sir.
For some clarity here, it may just be becoming a bit farther down on your presentation. So the mezzo business, as an example. So there's edibles, and there's going to be cannabis, and then these mezzo businesses, would that include, for example, a retail developer that's in the process of developing a lemonade-infused cannabis product? That's not an edible, but I don't know if it's defined as edible or not. So if that's the case, that would be one of these mezzo businesses, is that correct?
Not necessarily. It's going to depend on what the individual components of the product are. The good news is if they come to you with the license, the license issued by the Office of Cannabis Management tells you what they're authorized to sell, and that's the limitation for what they have. So there are some businesses that can carry multiple designations. You could be a cannabis retailer and a cannabis microbusiness, or there's different permutations within there. But the product types that are allowed to be sold by each category are specified in the statute, and that is reviewed at the state level.
And then my last question relates to the issuance of a minimum of one license for every 12,500 people. And so is there a change in the statute, when I was looking through it over the last couple of weeks, that if the city decides to open a cannabis business in a form of a municipal cannabis business, if the city decides that they're going to run those, and some of the other mayors and other communities are looking at that, so say they do, is it a requirement, under some new changes in the law, that says if a city decides to run a municipal cannabis dispensary in their city, are they required by the law to issue a second one to a private retailer?
It is my understanding, and I'm going to defer to Mr. Lindsey, but it's my understanding that the 2024 legislative change that allows specifically for cities to operate a muni, so to speak, you cannot count that towards your one per 12,5 cap if one is in place for a retail establishment.
Thank you, that's what I thought. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. So it might be further in your presentation as well, but just for some clarification, so Virginia's current population is underneath that 12,500 bar. Does that mean we have to or do not, do we have the option of not if we are under that threshold of population?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Lindsey for the specific question.
Mr. Lindsey?
My understanding of the rule is that you have to allow one.
Okay, so one, and that can be held by the city municipally?
One, and that doesn't count the city. If a municipal license is issued, it does not count that municipal license.
Okay, and I guess I would like some clarification. I've been just talking with another community who just recently passed some zoning. They did two different, they did a zoning ordinance, and then they did a registration ordinance, so they did two different types of ordinances, and they are holding on the 12,500. So could we get some legal clarification on that 12,500? We are under that population, and it states that if the county, it's in Chief Mattson's letter as well, the county, if the county chooses to issue those, I think we did a population, I don't know how much, if it's in all the demographics in the county, is that correct?
The way the population was calculated for the purposes of the St. Louis County ordinance was to use the state demographer countywide population total and removing the populations that were published for those areas that engage in their own planning and zoning authority. I believe there is language in Minnesota Statute 342.13, and it might have been renumbered as I. And please keep in mind, my presentation was made to the Rams Board based on what the county was doing. I am not involved in providing not only legal advice to this body, but also not any municipalities. My recollection is there is a section in 34213 that would allow for a local unit of government possibly to use countywide caps to count toward licenses that could be issued by this particular municipality. That's not an area I've focused on, it's outside of the scope of what I have worked on. But keep in mind that the county ordinance only applies to those areas where we have planning and zoning authority.
So, thank you for that. So the way I'm reading this, I've got 342.13 here, is that the city, in fact, could defer to the county's allocation?
I can't give you advice on that.
So I think that's the clarification I'm looking at, the answer I'm looking for.
We will have to get, yeah, we'll have to get that.
Yep, I'm looking at the, if a county has one active registration for every 12,500 residents, a city or town within the county is not obligated to register a cannabis business. That stated 342.13, and then it would be G-
H, or is it H2, maybe?
Excuse me, it's I.
So what I will say, and this is advice that you'll have to work on directly with Mr. Lindsey, is that the St. Louis County Ordinance, population-wise, only covers those areas for which we have planning and zoning authority. So that means that the population of Virginia, in terms of the retail registrations that St. Louis County can issue, doesn't include the population of Virginia.
Mr. Lindsey?
So the, I will double-check my opinion, but my understanding of the way that it operated is, once we passed our own legislation, we separated from the county to a certain degree. So I'll double-check that. That was my understanding of how it initially was rolling out.
Okay, so that would be one, because, and then the other point of clarification I would like, and I don't know if you're able to give this, is when you're talking about cannabis retailer, cannabis mezzo business with retail operations endorsement, and cannabis microbusiness with a retail operations endorsement, when I went into the definitions of the microbusiness, mezzo business, and then we go further in our own ordinance with cannabis retailer licensing, and then event organizer licensing, licensing portion of it, and so they can grow cannabis plants, I think the mayor was alluding to what can they do and what are the differences, so they are defined and outlined like you had stated in the statute. My point of clarification that I'd like to know is, when it states, no fewer than one active registration shall be issued per 12,500 residents for the following retail businesses, and then it lists cannabis retailer with that endorsement, or a retail operations endorsement, or a microbusiness with that, also that endorsement, is that three different under that, is that equal three? Or is it just, and is that all-inclusive, or is it individual?
So again, I can't give you advice as to how this applies to your jurisdiction. I'm here to provide a broad overview of what the framework is for Minnesota Statute Chapter 342, and how St. Louis County arrived at the ordinance that it enacted. I can tell you that for the purposes of the ordinance that was enacted by St. Louis County, the retail business cap is inclusive of, based upon how the statute itself is structured, to not be one per each of the enumerated businesses that precedes a comma.
Thank you so much for that clarification. And if we could check on that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Paulson. Thank you.
So the other option in Minnesota Statute, Chapter 342, Paragraph C, allows for certain restrictions in terms of what St. Louis County referred to as buffer zones from a school, 1,000 feet of a school, 500 feet of a licensed childcare facility, is the language that was used in the St. Louis County Ordinance, residential treatment facility, or any attraction within a public park regularly used by minors, including a playground or athletic field. And then the language that was ultimately adopted in St. Louis County appears on the following page. There is also an opportunity to restrict the hours of operation for certain retail businesses, as set forth in Minnesota Statute 34227, and it only applies to those retail endorsements. That would also be subject to the license cap, should one be enacted by this body for your jurisdiction. So the hours of operation for retail establishments are set forth in the statute. There's an additional option to restrict the business from being open from 9:00 PM to 2:00 AM the following day, and between 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM on the days Monday through Saturday. This was a subject of much ire when we were working on drafting our language, because the statute, the way it's written, seemed confusing, at least to me and to some of my coworkers who were trying to best figure out how to encapsulate this additional restriction and communicate that, so folks are on notice as to when they can be open. Ultimately, the language that was enacted by St. Louis County notes that the businesses cannot be open between 9:00 PM and 2:00 AM the following day, or between 8:00 AM and 10:00 AM. And for avoidance of doubt, this prohibition is in addition to the general hours of operation that are identified within the statute itself. So the focus of much of the opportunity there is for a local unit of government to regulate time, place, and manner restrictions, again, provided that it doesn't end up in a, per se, prohibition of a cannabis business, ends up falling to planning and zoning, and you're in very good hands with Ms. Burbane. The statute does have some drawbacks, and one of them is that there are two phases at which the local unit of government becomes involved. The first phase, after an ordinance is enacted, of course, the first phase is the certification phase, and that is at which time someone has come to the Office of Cannabis Management to, with their application, the office reviews the application, they determine what business type it falls under, they then send it to the local unit of government, who has 30 days, and that's it, to respond to the certification request by the state, and that allows for the review of whether or not the proposed business location complies with any setbacks or other zone districts that you may decide to place these businesses in. If a response isn't made within 30 days, the Office of Cannabis Management, regardless of what impact that business may have within your own existing zoning or new framework you may enact as part of your ordinance, they can go ahead and issue the registration. So for that reason, what St. Louis County decided to do is to categorize the business types into those that are retail or have a retail operations endorsement, and those that are more manufacturing. And that is because over-the-counter permits can then be issued for those business types, because the 30-day timeframe does not comply with Chapter 394, which would allow for a Board of Adjustment or Planning Commission to hold a public hearing as to whether or not to issue a conditional use permit for a particular business type in a zone district. So you'll see on the next page that St. Louis County has broken these into, all retail businesses will be allowed in commercial districts, and the list of the retail businesses are listed there. Lower potency hemp edible retailer does appear in that section at this time, contemplating the fact that at some point those Department of Health registrations will transfer over into the management under 342 in the Office of Cannabis Management. And retail businesses are not going to be allowed in other zone districts. So manufacturing and cultivation were then separated off for, not quite a catch-all, but more consistent with that type of use. And those are going to be allowed in our limited industrial districts. Again, that selection was made because it's consistent with similar uses in that area, and over-the-counter permits can be issued, because hearings on conditional use permits would not be permitted under the statute with those obligations. Now, there are some places where you can have a cannabis microbusiness that aren't retail, but you also have retail cannabis microbusiness, right? This is where some of the overlap happens. This means that, based on the framework that St. Louis County has set up, your non-retail operations still have to fall within this limited industrial. Any portion of your business that would be retail still would have to be in a commercial district. The manner that St. Louis County has decided to proceed with this particular process for certification and then registration, when I get to that, involves our planning and zoning department being the point of contact, especially because of the buffer zones that we have enacted, and to determine if the business type is listed within our, falls within the appropriate zoning district. We have worked on just kind of streamlining that contact through the planning and zoning department. There is another opportunity where we can consult with some of our public health partners regarding where licensed daycares are. That's something that's regulated, and records are kept on a state level, and that's information that's more readily available through that avenue. But with regard to particularly treatment centers as well, those are a little more health-related, not necessarily zoning-related, so that information will be sought from various sources to determine whether or not the individual business that the Office of Cannabis Management is seeking certification about, falls within the framework of our ordinance. It sounds as though, and this is more of a logistics thing, and if I'm raining on your parade, Ms. Burbane, let me know, the Office of Cannabis Management has, among the many emails that they send out to those who are on the listserv, has set up a separate kind of software website where they want all local units of government to get set up. So that's how they intend upon transmitting those requests for certification, so those communications can go back and forth that way. So it's envisioned at this time to be a paperless system. So someone will have to have access to that account. I suspect poor Jenny is going to be working on those, but they're envisioning that to be all done through their quasi-proprietary software. So now we come to registration. So someone has gone to the Office of Cannabis Management, they have submitted sufficient information to the state- They have submitted sufficient information to the state to go through the certification process. They meet with your zoning requirements. Now they come with their license in hand issued by the state to register the business. We're also going to handle that in the planning and zoning department. This is more applicable to the retail business operations because of the license cap. So from a St. Louis County standpoint, and probably generally speaking, any jurisdiction which has a cap, you could meet the requirements for certification, but if you have a cap on your retail business licenses, you could come to register, and those slots have already been filled. So that is something that could occur if there is someone who has been granted, you know, approved, gone through the approval process for certification, and then by the time they go through that entire process to get the license and they come to register, those slots could already be filled at the local level. If it's a non-retail business, and it meets your zoning, however, and they show up to register, you shall register them.
Question.
Yes, sir.
As, and I think it'll be probably in the next slide, but the fees that are involved in this page, that, those are, those are regulated by the Office of Cannabis Management. We don't, we can't regulate the fees associated with registration. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
They even make you do math, which I did not appreciate. It's not why I went to law school. So, the registration and renewal fees are identified by business type, and those are set forth in the statute. And only certain business types' initial registration fees and renewal fees can be charged at the local level. This is the slide that I know you've heard nothing about to this point, about how St. Louis County is not going to take over your jurisdiction, and we count on you to do what's best to serve your constituents, as you already obviously do. There is an opportunity for local units of government to impose a civil penalty under Minnesota Statute 34222 for violations of various components related to sales or operation of cannabis businesses outside of the requirements of registration. And that civil penalty is specified at $2,000. I'm sure you could probably do less if you wanted to, and Mr. Lindsay thought it was a great plan, but you cannot do more. So that's the amount we chose. Compliance checks. Compliance checks are required by statute for those local units of government who register camp or cannabis, cannabis or hemp businesses. I've outlasted my coffee for the day, I apologize. These compliance checks must include unannounced age verification requirements and also zoning requirements, which means, in essence, I think, in terms of implementation, is the business where it was supposed to be. There also has to be kind of a controlled by-type scenario by an underage person, much like with liquor regulation, where those businesses who have liquor licenses to operate within your community, you have to send in someone underage, with parental permission, all very similar requirements to try to purchase products.
Tobacco and alcohol.
Yes.
Requirements by law.
Right. And for that reason, those compliance checks in St. Louis County, we're going to have operated by the same group of folks who do them for tobacco and for alcohol, the framework's set up, no need to reinvent the wheel. But those are required on at least an annual basis. Cannabis events. This is the one opportunity where local units of government get to say no first. So if someone has a cannabis event organizer designation from the Office of Cannabis Management, they have to first come to the local unit of government to get approval for their event before it is fully authorized by the Office of Cannabis Management. The permit fee that appears in the St. Louis County ordinance was selected because it is identical to that for someone who wants to do an off-site liquor-type application for a special event. So we picked a similar application fee for those to be consistent, and those are going to be handled by the same committee that handles those types of intoxicating beverage-type licenses. The applications will be reviewed by formerly known as the Liquor Licensing Committee to determine it meets the statutory requirements. I will say that there were significant changes to this particular statute in the 2024 session that actually resulted in more robust regulation, which we didn't necessarily see in all of the other statutory changes in 342. And it is very, very detailed in terms of trying to front-end any possible chaos you could assume would be related to large groups of people generally getting together, and then you add on some type of intoxicant in terms of security planning, packaging locations, who are your security people going to be, age requirements. It's very detailed, and does give an excellent roadmap for local units of government to follow in evaluating the propriety of a cannabis event.
So I have one quick question.
Yes, sir.
It's more of a comment than a question. The unfunded mandates as being...
This is not the first time I've heard that term in regard to 342, sir.
Yeah, so I'll just, so I'll just leave it at that. But the second piece is, what's disturbing to me, and I know this has nothing to do with your presentation, but I just wanted to point out to the general public and my perspective on things. And it bothers me that, you know, the old saying that, "I'm from the government, I'm here to help." In this particular instance, that's not the case, from my perspective, because it says here that a local unit of government can suspend the retail license for cause, right? Who's not in compliance. But then we must immediately, if not sooner, contact the Office of Cannabis Management and let them know about that. And they can review our action, and they can modify or overturn it.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You simultaneously have the opportunity to take immediate action if there is an endangerment issue, or if you're aware of non-compliance for someone selling a product that they don't Let me start here. Someone selling a product that they don't have a registration for, or they don't have a license from the Office of Cannabis Management. So, local units of governments can still take action, but the state can decide if they like what's been decided or not, and they can tell us that you shall reinstate this establishment to resume their business, regardless of what local decisions have been made. Your mayor was more succinct and direct, and I preferred that. So that is the end of my legal overview, in a general sense. And I'm sorry, I sure hope nobody thinks that I'm trying to short questions or anything. I just want to be really clear, you're in very good hands with Mr. Lindsay. I don't want to step out of my lane in terms of advising on what's best for you folks. I've known Mr. Lindsay, well, I think, the entirety of my career up here. I know that you're in really good hands. I've been fortunate enough to work on this multidisciplinary project, right, that ends up overlapping with a number of county departments, but I really focused quite exclusively because the county doesn't regulate zoning for cities, really on those that touched on more of a broader area, countywide, as opposed to some of the more specifics that impact municipalities. The local government guide that's available from the Office of Cannabis Management, it gets updated from time to time, that has a variety of information available, including a model ordinance. I know that's something that's been evaluated and reviewed in what will be presented today. Any questions that I can provide help with in terms of how some of our department interplay will work, please feel free to reach out. Mayor Coffey has had to listen to me struggle through this now a second time, but, you know, this is brand-new territory for everyone working on it. And I know that we're all going to kind of have to help each other limp along through this process as it rolls out. St. Louis County started out being very restrictive, as restrictive as we can be, as set forth in 342. And the goal behind that is to ensure that we have a successful rollout and implementation with the statutory framework that we currently have. Will caps be revisited at some point? Will different zoning districts be evaluated? Will the law change to allow for the potential for a conditional use permit? Certainly, this is a starting point from the county standpoint. Things will need to be tweaked as legislation changes, as we all sit back and observe how this, how the rollout, when it finally happens, impacts our communities and those various stakeholders. So, that was the approach that we took to ensure not only that we're protecting public safety and the, allowing opportunity for folks to have a livelihood in this endeavor, but to ensure that we can successfully implement what this legislation requires from a local standpoint.
Thank you very much, Kristin. I really appreciate the...
You're welcome.
...the presentation. The ordinance that St. Louis County adopted went through a significant vetting process through your office and through their planning and zoning, and reading through that ordinance and listening to your presentation at Ram's, and again, today, it's, we have an ordinance, we have a lot of work still to do. And this hearing is to get some additional information out to the public and from the public on their opinions. So your presentation is, was critical to providing some guidelines and information to our populace, so thank you very much for that. So before you leave for today, would you, are available to take just a couple more questions or clarifications?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you. Councilor Motley.
Hi, thank you for coming in, bringing your presentation. And this might be even for our attorney, but I'm just going to throw this at either one of you, just random thoughts out loud of what if a city, I know you can't speak for the state, but as we are aware, every, more or less, every city's been forced to start selling marijuana in their cities, whether they hold the license or give it to somebody else, but hypothetically, what could possibly be a consequence if the city does not follow the new state statute and issue a license to somebody? Hypothetically.
So if I'm understanding the question generally, it is, someone shows up with their registration, gone through the certification process, sorry, they've gone through the certification process, they've received their license from the Office of Cannabis Management, they meet your planning and zoning requirements, they show up to register, and it has decided to not take action on the application.
Yeah, hypothetically.
Right.
What would be the consequences?
Many lawsuits would be what I would suspect. This has already proven to be a litigious group of folks, and that's an observation, not a value judgment, to be very clear, but that would be in contravention of the plain language of the statute. Fair?
Okay. Okay, thank you. And then just kind of segueing back to one other thing, which I don't know if you're going to want to answer this, but it was kind of discussed earlier tonight. So I'm just hypothetically thinking as you guys are talking. So, Statute 342, got 131 local control, and I had highlighted letter I, which you actually did remember as you were talking, is letter I. If a county has one active registration for every 12,500 residents, a city or town within the county is not obligated to register a cannabis business. And I know we're not quite going there with an answer, but in my head, I'm thinking about this, and I'm thinking, I'm trying to think population, I just Googled population, St. Louis County is probably around 200,000 or something.
I think it came in right around there. I have a spreadsheet where it's all broken out by municipality that I can't access without my network.
Yeah.
I think I have an answer to your question, but I want you to finish.
I know, I'm just hypothetically thinking, so I just, what I saw from 2022, the population was a little over 199,000. So in my head, it jumped it up to 200,000 in St. Louis County, hypothetically, which would force, per the state statute of 12,500 residents, it would force the county to issue 16 licenses. But I know you guys are doing something different, if we have our own planning and zoning, it sounds like.
Right.
Which is where, now, it's like, I didn't know that when we started talking. So hypothetically, is this possibly a gray area in this statute where the city can, hypothetically, since we don't know possibly, that we might fall under something where it could, if the state, the county gets 16 licenses?
So the county isn't going to give 16 licenses, because the county ordinance only applies and includes population calculation of those areas for which we have planning and zoning authority. So, 16 retail licenses being issued by St. Louis County for those areas where we have planning and zoning authority is in excess of what the state demographer population is for that area. What I will say is that I don't think the statute was written, you're writing a statute that's supposed to apply to 87 counties and however many hundreds of thousands of municipalities that are statewide. Not only did it not take into account things like conditional use permits and the legal requirements for those to be reviewed and issued in public hearings, I don't think it necessarily took into account that there are jurisdictions for which you have cities that exercise their own planning and zoning authority that are not identical to the planning and zoning authority enacted by a county. And certainly, likely not considering a county the size of St. Louis County that has as many cities of the first class and those approaching cities of the first class within its jurisdiction. That's as good of an answer as I can give.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I just feel like it's a gray area then, but anyway, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
And thank you. Kristin, thank you. Any other questions, comments from the elected body? Okay, any questions or comments from the audience? Since the public hearing, to get some information, we'll provide you as much as we can. Additional action is going to be taken and forthcoming with respect to the ordinance, and being cognizant of the planning and zoning's hard work in developing this ordinance for us as well. So, Kristin, thank you very much. It was a real pleasure seeing you once again, and thank you for the very detailed and freeing all our questions, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Jenny, do you have anything you'd like to add as we part of this public hearing?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to Assistant Attorney Swanson for attending and providing us general overview of statute and ordinances that apply within St. Louis County. Our Planning and Zoning Commission has been reviewing the cannabis ordinance information, and this draft ordinance that's been put forth is from all of that review over the last several months. We did keep tabs on St. Louis County and what they were doing, and, you know, looked to them for some guidance in terms of the distinction between where they have planning and zoning authority and where we have planning and zoning authority. So I think that was made clear tonight, that this is really ours. We have to enforce this, we have to draft it. As a council, you have to approve it. And so what was put forth was, again, information that Planning and Zoning has reviewed and considered for you to review and consider. And if there are changes that you want to see in this draft, we would need to know that before we start our first and either second readings of those ordinances. You know, of note, in the memo that was sent to you with the public hearing notice, we do have requirements, minimum buffer requirements set in place, as suggested by planning and zoning, within 500 feet. Maps were provided of 500-foot buffers and 1,000-foot buffers in the packet as well, with the zoning underlaid, so you could see where the actual zone districts where these uses could be allowed are within the city limits, and what those overlaps, what the limitations of those overlaps are. So there was suggested of the 500-foot, you know, you could go up to 1,000 if you so choose to do that. to do that. Additionally, kind of mirroring St. Louis's, St. Louis County's ordinance for zoning and land use, a cannabis business shall be permitted per planning and zoning's recommendation in B2 Community Business District and not allowed in other districts. So those would be the retail operations. And they would be, and then cannabis businesses shall be permitted uses in the B1 Central Business District and not allowed in other districts. However, they're suggesting that one municipal cannabis retail business be subject to these restrictions and one non-municipal, or did I say that right? One non-municipal and one municipal. So it would be limited to really one within the B1 district.
And thank you. And to clarify that, is Planning and Zoning and the staff recommending that we adopt a municipal cannabis dispensary or license in the city? This is just, this is just, or is this just the draft ordinance or recommendations that if we were going to do that, we would follow the same restrictions as a private retailer?
Correct. And it is just for your consideration, Planning and Zoning did not feel that they wanted to limit what the city could do by not allowing that municipal license. If, it's not something that you have to do, but it opens that up in case in the future maybe the council chooses to operate a cannabis municipal retail business.
And so that bodes for some significant discussion with respect to that. So before we go to Counselor Paulson, is there a timeframe in which we need to accomplish this?
Um, I would defer to our city attorney on that. Personally, I feel like we really do need to start, we should have started maybe this conversation a little bit earlier, but with some of the litigation that's taken place, we do have some leeway now. But I don't know that we want to postpone it much longer, in my opinion.
So we want to have an ordinance in place before the Office of Cannabis Management makes her decision with respect to some of these regulatory requirements for zoning?
Correct.
Thank you. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. And as we just heard, the soonest that they would be granting licenses would be the spring of 2025. So we have until at least that, that's when the Court of Appeals will rule in on that. So we have until the spring to actually identify or tweak the suggested ordinance that's before us on this public, at this public hearing today. Okay. So there is time.
Yeah, there is time. And the purpose of this is, is hearing is to provide information, gather information, hear from the general public, hear from the elected body, hear from the experts who have already began that process down the road, and to, to follow some of the guidelines established by the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Community Development Director and Staff. And so, yeah, well, this is going to be some time for us to review the, or this is purposes for us to give the information, we'll be reviewing the ordinance and then coming back and make some suggestion changes and tweak this ordinance based upon we feel as if we come to consensus in that regard. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. So again, the, what we're being asked to do at this public hearing is to review the proposed city ordinance, Section 8, Chapter 20, entitled Regulating Cannabis Business Ordinance, and Section 11.13, Chapter 11, Land Use and Zoning Regulations, Amending Zone District Regulations for Cannabis Businesses. And like I said, the community that I spoke to are treating this as two different ordinances. One is a zoning ordinance and one is a registration, adopting a registration format and the types that that will go into with the registration. So I feel like we have to have, are we having two ordinances? Do we need two public hearings? The way that ours is reading is it seems to be combining all of it with the registration falling under the zoning without having a separate registration ordinance like we would maybe have tobacco and alcohol. So I'm concerned how we're doing this, the process, and the, a few things that I have, I don't agree, I think, I truly think the Planning and Zoning Commission for reviewing this, this is very entailed and very, a lot of information, but I don't agree with, when I look at the maps that are in our packet regarding today's public hearing on the B1 and the B2, and when you look at the B2 community businesses, it's lumping in, so I went and actually pulled, like I said earlier, I pulled all the statutes, the definitions of mezzo, micro-business, mezzo-business, cannabis retailer, cannabis event organizer, non-municipal cannabis retail, what that definition is. Then I went to non-retail cannabis businesses, and I have some very severe concerns as to the designation in light industrial, which would be, I think, is it L1 and L2? I, I1 and I2 industrial, two, one and two. Those are actually cultivating, manufacturing, and some of those designations are right within the town, the parameters. So I don't agree with the current recommendations of zoning for some of the non-retail cannabis use, and I'm not sure I'm comfortable lumping all of the micro, mezzo, cannabis retailer and cannabis event organizer, as well as a medical cannabis combination business, all into one lump grouping and then saying that that's a permitted use in a B2 where B1 is central businesses. So if you look on our map, it's kind of hard to tell because of the, while printing, but also because of the map overlay, where B1 and B2 are specifically, like some of the red, I think they're all in, Jenny, are they all in red? Correct. So looking at that, some of those are right next to R2s. So I don't know if this is what I'm looking at, maybe some clarification, but I don't necessarily agree with, with what, how we're doing this. Do we need to have a zoning ordinance first and a registration ordinance? So we need to keep them separate. And I will, Brian, I will provide you with the community that's actually doing that. And I've got all of their, their references, but it says 13 of the, of the license types, which are cultivators, delivery service, events, event organizers, cannabis manufacturers, mezzo businesses, micro businesses, testing facilities, transporters, wholesalers, dispensaries, lower potency hemp edible manufacturers, and medical cannabis combination businesses are newly established as conditional uses. This designation requires a planning commission to review each application during a public hearing and make a recommendation to the city council before review and action may be taken on the application by the city council. The proposed regulations subject to each of, subject, subject each of these 13 license types to the maximum separation buffers allowed by state law. So they're, they're treating each one of these 13 categories as separate. And I'd like us, I mean, we have plenty of time to review this. I would like to go in and look at how some of these other communities, and I watched their YouTube meeting on this, they were given guidance from the League of Minnesota Cities. So I'm not sure if we have done that. Have we gotten any guidance from the League of Minnesota Cities?
The League of Minnesota Cities has an abundance of guidance on their website. There has been no direct outreach to the league. However, they have a lot of reference material on their site, as does the state.
Okay. Thank you for that, Jenny. And Virginia's just very unique in our landlock and our zoning. One, one zone bumps up against another zone, that could be a potential question in my mind. So before, I would feel comfortable moving forward in any way, I would want a much longer review process of what we are actually doing. And do we need to have two different tracks, one being a zoning track and one being a registration tract? I feel like we need to have both of those because we did the rental code ordinance. You know, we actually had that, and then we had the registration. There were two different separate actions. So I, in my opinion, where I feel comfortable is that this is too rushed and we really need to look at the maps and the zoning within the maps. I understand it might only be one license, but as it was alluded to, it might be, eventually it might be under a conditional use permit. And so if we don't really think this process through, we might be adopting something that could potentially be in conflict later on with taxpayers in our community. The second question that I have that I, two questions, I want clarification on the 12,500, and I, and I would challenge that if we are needing two or just one. I would truly challenge that and need some legal, and maybe we can go to the League of Minnesota Cities for that. The second thing, when it is showing the 500, 1,000-foot buffer, whatever, the state statute minimum qualifications are the 1,000-foot and then for school, and then 500 for everything else is what I believe I'm reading. What does the statute say within businesses located by each other? Like we have a secondhand store registration license, and we just recently changed that ordinance to 500 feet. We, we lengthened that. I know we, we only need to maybe do one license, but if in the event a conditional use permit situation arises or the state statute changes, what about one wants to locate at one location, one side of the mall, and the other one wants to go on the other side of the mall? What is the parameters? There's nothing that I saw in the state statutes between each other. And can we put that in our ordinance? And I know that's a mouthful.
Well, before you go, you're talking about the White Bear Lake model?
No, I'm just talking specifically, there's nothing in the state statute that I could find that regulates the distance between licensed businesses. Am I correct?
Well, Jenny?
I believe you are correct that there's nothing in statute. However, I don't know that off the top of my head. However, we can have that distance, and the Planning and Zoning Commission did include that as one of the buffers, 500 feet between any retail location, similar to the secondhand goods.
Okay. Maybe I missed that. What page is that on, Jenny, in the, in the ordinance coming forward? Excuse me.
Should be within the, oh, page six?
So it's page three of the actual ordinance?
Section 3, 3.1 Minimum Buffer Requirements. The last minimum buffer requirement has the City of Virginia shall prohibit the operation of cannabis retail businesses within 500 feet of another cannabis retail business. That was a suggestion by Planning and Zoning to council.
So only 500 feet, but there's nothing in state statute yet, so we could actually increase that even beyond 1,000? Because there's nothing, I read the, well, I mean, I, I can say I read it, but I can't say I understood it. Okay. So before we would do any type of adopting, I think we need to look long and hard at what other communities have done, how they treat each one of those, I don't know what you call them, businesses, for lack of a better word, but if there's 13 of them, are there 13 different license types? I think we need to review that. And before, I would feel comfortable moving forward at all. I think we need to actually have a review of that and then look over our zoning. I would like to see a map of our zoning that actually is clear so we can understand, like just across from the minors, the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, Salvation Army, I think that's, is that B1 or B2? You could be locating that right there. So there's a nursing home there. So I'm just concerned as to where these are, even though it's zoned, and I appreciate that they went through all the zones, you know, and what would make sense in those zones, but I'd like to look at what's up, what's next to those zones, whether it's residential, light, you've got light industrial up by the SEPI site up there, up on the north side, that would allow for manufacturing and cultivation.
Unless you, unless you put buffers, which if it's next to a residential treatment facility, then it would not be allowed within that area.
Is there a residential treatment facility there? No.
Or, and that's another thing, within the City of Virginia, there are, we're very limited because of how many parks that we have. So there's very limited area for businesses to be established. So we have to be careful on what those buffer distances are because we can't exclude it entirely, is my understanding.
For light and dust, for, for manufacturing wholesale?
I believe for both.
Okay. And I would like that clarified as well.
Mr. Lindsay? So during all of the presentations that I first had attended, and my understanding of this is that the cities are given control, zoning control, to put some reasonable regulations in place, but we are, we are cautioned not to use our zoning authority to zone the potential use out of existence.
Thank you. And so, thank you, Counselor Paulson. So the goal and objective of this public hearing is to glean all this information. We have a draft ordinance for us to take a look at. The public has been made aware of that. We've discussed it. We have some presentations with respect to that. So now, once the public hearing is closed, then we'll work on the, and tweak this ordinance to determine and do our due diligence and do our investigation and look at some of the other business models like the White Bear Lake and others to determine, you know, how we finalize the specific language and, and, and the language that we do recommend when we adopt this ordinance on the first and second reading, that we're complying with the law, number one, and there's, we're not regulating, you said, Mr. Lindsay, overregulating so that it's make it impossible for somebody to have a license. So thank you for that. So any other comments with respect to the public hearing? We have, we have a lot of work to do. Okay. Look, Counselor Bachsneider?
Thank you. First, thank you, Assistant Attorney Swanson, for being here. Thank you, Jenny, for your work on this, and to the commission for their work. One question that I do have, based on Assistant Attorney's presentation, is we talked about that lower potency hemp edible and how that is going to then transition to this new ordinance. In the meantime, as we don't have an ordinance in place, how do lower potency hemp edibles get approved within the City of Virginia? Is there, is there an answer for that? Thank you.
We have that already, but, Brian, here.
So my understanding, we do have some regulation, but it's very limited. And these low potency hemp edibles, these are the ones that I believe are produced under the Hemp Act or the Hemp Bill. And so when these things came in, it was the Wild West. There's been some regulation put in place, but it, with a little bit of luck, it'll get a lot better under the new, when the new regulations roll out.
So it's separate from any city ordinance in place? It's really a state guideline that's out there for us?
The, under the hemp statute, we have, that's by the state.
Correct. It's state-controlled. We do not have a local ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bachsneider. Okay. So Pam, you had something, you were patiently waiting, and then I guess we have some more questions as well. So Pam?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not quite sure what the definition of spring is by the state, but it's already almost the end of January. And in order for the city to process an ordinance, it's going to take 30 to 35 days. Just want to make the council aware of that. So we're on a short timeline, I guess.
We have time to vet, but thank you for that, Pam. Okay. Anyone else before we close the public hearing? Counselor Motley?
Jenny, thank you. And thank you to Planning and Zoning for their recommendations. Just a quick question, unless I'm just missing this, just as a Midway residence, I don't see Midway in the maps. Did I miss that?
Midway was not included in the maps because there isn't sufficient area in Midway that would be zoned to allow these types of uses per the recommendations.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Motley. Okay. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Thanks for the presentation. We have a lot of work to do moving forward and so on. And thank you for the reminder of the timeframe with respect to moving this ordinance forward. So if there's not anything else to come before the elected body here at this public hearing, seeing and hearing none? seeing and hearing none, we will close the public hearing effective 6:00 PM. Thank you. And if you, if you're here, if you would please sign in, if you attended the public hearing, we'd appreciate that very much. We'll take a five-minute break, and then we're going to start the council meeting. Thank you. Okay, thank you, everybody, for your patience. We're going to continue on and start our city council meeting, so if anyone, please be seated, and we'll get started. Welcome to the city council meeting. This is a regularly scheduled city council meeting. We'll call this meeting to order. Today's date is Tuesday, January 14, 2025, and the time is 6:05 PM. Pam, would you please take the roll call?
Johnson?
Here.
Motley?
Here.
Paulson?
President.
Beyondich?
President.
Bachsneider?
Here.
Friedle?
Here.
Cuffy?
Here. Please stand, everyone, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move to item 3A. It's not on our agenda, but it is the recognition of Martin Luther King Day, which is coming up on, is it, Monday, the January 15th, so, January 20th you have, and the 15th. So this is a proclamation that the city issues for a number of different events, but this is a very important one. It's the celebration of Martin Luther King Day, and so on behalf of the city council and the residents of the City of Virginia, I'd like to read this proclamation. Whereas Reverend Martin Luther King Jr., who was born January 15, 1929, dedicated and sacrificed his life to promote a world of peace, equity, justice, and freedom for all. Whereas we are inspired by Dr. King as he lived his life preaching words of peace, hope, and harmony. Dr. King once said, and we quote, "The hope of a secure and livable world lies with the disciplined, nonconformists who are dedicated to justice, peace, and brotherhood. Darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. The survival of mankind rests on the shores of good. The adage 'evil wins when good does nothing' is a reminder of our responsibilities as human beings. Whereas the teaching of Dr. King must live on in all of us, for mankind to survive, we must live by a higher calling, one that is designed to motivate and encourage good people to overcome evil. Whereas our community stands together in support of love, kindness, peace, and truth, and where openness and communication is key to a strong, healthy, welcoming, and safe environment for all people. Whereas we declare our support and commitment to human rights through the world, every person is protected by the Human Rights Act as advocated by Dr. King. Our community stands for freedom. We stand for peace. We stand for justice for all. Now therefore, it be resolved by Mayor Larry Cuffey Jr. and the city council with the support of the county and the community, the Human Rights Commission, and all citizens of the City of Virginia, Minnesota, that we proclaim today, Monday, January 20th, would be the day of recognition to celebrate and honor of a humble man of peace, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and we recommit our efforts to live a life of peace and acceptance." Thank you. Item number four on the agenda, which is a public forum, this is an opportunity for anybody who'd like to speak, to address the council's seat, and welcome to do so. This is your opportunity to come forward at this time. Please state your name for the record. Welcome to the city council meeting.
Greg Lindsay. I'm going to backtrack a little bit to last week's meeting. So in regards to the best practices for the solid waste, I think that's a great idea. I want to see that in a, along with that, a comprehensive overview of all our costs associated with solid waste, trucks, labor, insurance, maintenance, maintenance outside of our own facility, everything, so that as a citizen and this council, you can look at that number and say, hey, if we go to a private carrier for the solid waste, are we truly getting a benefit by doing that? And only by having all the numbers associated with the cost, could we look at that and reflect back and say, yeah, we're getting a deal, or not? And then the next, I'll go, I'll let you answer this when I'm done. Page 57 of our package, 9.1H, it was mentioned at that meeting, a purchase of a recycling truck, a new recycling truck. We'll come back to that. So just as a quick list, ladder truck, ambulance, two plow trucks, two beverage carts, one one-ton truck with a utility box on the back, garbage truck, grapple bucket, mulching head, total $3,455,000. And in, to correct the statement again, our levy in 2023 was the highest levy passed in the City of Virginia in 20 years, 25th highest levy in the state of Minnesota. In a seven-county area in northeastern Minnesota, Virginia's levy was number one, the highest levy. We are taxed right to the max, and our levy reflects that. So there's no disputing that. Those figures can be brought up anywhere. So also, in regards to the ladder truck, I would like to see an update in quarterly basis on what efforts were made to have the grant applications put out. Who did they go to? How many people? And what were the results of those grant applications? So we're getting that information that was promised to us, that those applications would be looked at in a, in a manner so that two years from now, when that truck shows up, we're not standing here in this room and saying, well, who is responsible for the grant applications? What are the results of those applications? So I'd like a motion made by the council to say that we need an update on those applications. I'd like to see that for the benefit of the public and yourself, so that you know who's doing it, and what are the results of those applications? Because we got a $3 million truck coming our way, we got to pay for it. And let's go back to the recycling truck. That's all I have. I need an explanation on that, since we no longer have a recycling.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lindsay. Councilor Motley?
I guess I was kind of curious about that, too. I didn't know that we were looking at a recycling truck. Are we looking at a recycling truck?
We still do cardboard pickup businesses?
We have, we have a cardboard truck that we, we still pick up for businesses, commercial businesses, cardboard truck, so we're looking at that. And we're not, it's not necessarily that we're going to, we're going to purchase it, it's just on the radar for us to consider.
I guess my question is, why do we have?
Let me finish, please, and then you're welcome to retort. So that's what it's for. It's recycling for cardboard. It's a truck that may be needed in the future. We have made a decision to purchase it. It's on the radar for potential need. We'll take a look at the equipment bond and everything we have associated with that to make a determination whether it's prudent for us to do so. Mr. Lindsay?
So that would be strictly for the downtown businesses?
No, cardboard pickup for all businesses.
So I mean, right now, all the citizens, if they have cardboard and they're recycling, like myself, we bring them to the dumpsters.
You do.
So we're doing a special recycling consideration for businesses, for cardboard?
We are now. We currently-
We're thinking about that.
Well, we currently provide that service now, Mr. Lindsay. Whether we're going to provide that in the future, it's yet to be determined. We're still working out the garbage collection service and do the cost benefit analysis. That's still forthcoming. We're doing the work on that. In addition to that, in order to go to a private hauler, if that was going to be the decision on the council to do so, it would require ordinance changes as well. So all those things are in the works as we, as we move forward. And you asked about the grant application program. We've directed staff by motion to seek opportunities and other grants, whether it's through the NFPA, the fire association, whatever it is, through our local legislators, through the federal government, whatever. We're sort of looking and seeking grant opportunities for that, and so once those come to fruition, we'll certainly be bringing that publicly, and so all the public and yourself is aware of where we're at with that.
So I guess I would just suggest that the recycling part of that can't even be a consideration. If we did away with our recycling program for the general public, saying there is no longer a profitable business, there can't be any consideration for, for general businesses in this town. They can pay for their own recycling, a cardboard. They can have the independent hauler, if that's the case, which we go to, come and pick up their cardboard and take care of it, or deal with it themselves. Because there's no way that's going to be a profitable business. I could tell you that without even looking at it. That we're going to hire a truck and a driver to haul cardboard? That's my opinion, but it doesn't look good.
Well, we currently have that service now, Mr. Lindsay, so thank you very much. Okay, all right. Please state your name for the record, and welcome to the council meeting.
Hi, my name is Kathy Katie, and I'm a taxpayer in Virginia. A few weeks ago, I came and I asked for a figure on how much ICMC is losing each month, and I still haven't had an answer, and I would like an answer on that. The other, other things that I would like to bring up, the city is in financial straits. I worked for the county for over 20 years. When we had financial problems, we had a travel ban on employees, we had a stop employee hiring, a freeze on employee hiring. I would like to very strongly suggest that somebody make a motion to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Okay, anybody else like to address the council? Okay, we'll move to item number five on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. The following items will be enacted by one motion unless a council or a citizen of the City of Virginia requests that the item be considered separately. Item 5.1 is the approval of corrections of the minutes of the December 10, 2024 council meeting, 541B, the December 10, 2024 Truth and Taxation Meeting, and 5.1C, the December 17, 2024 Special Meeting, and 5.1D, the January 2, 2025 Reorganization Meeting, and 5.1E, the January 2, 2025 Special Meeting. Item 5.2 is adoption of Finance Resolution Number 25-001, the Schedule of Bills. Item 5.3, approve the travel request for Jim Hunt. Operations manager for the Iron Trail Motors Event Center to attend the 2025 Explorer Minnesota Tourism Conference in Minneapolis on February 18 and 19, 2025, at a cost of $332.80. Item 5.4, approve the travel request for Britt C. Bennet and Pamela Bean to attend the MCFoA Annual Conference, March 19 through the 21st, 2025, with a cost of $1,077 and $937.84, respectively. Item 5.5, approve the 2025 massage license for Angie Drake, doing business as the Laurentian Divide and Spa and Salon. And item 5.6, approve the 2025 on-sale wine and 3-2 on-sale license for the Laurentian Arts and Culture Alliance, doing business as the Lyric Center for the Arts. These are the consent agenda items before the council today, looking for council action.
I will move the consent agenda.
Councilor Johnson moves to approve the consent agenda. Is there support? By Councilor Friedle, is there further discussion? Councilor Bachsneider?
Thank you. Can we pull 5.3 and 5.4 separate for consideration, please?
Sure. Councilor Bachsneider has requested 5.3 and 5.4 be set aside for further discussion. All those in favor of 5.1, 5.2, 5.5, and 5.6? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 5.3, Councilor Bachsneider?
Thank you. For the conference specifically, I'm wondering if we have an expected impact that we can see from that conference for the investment that we're making?
Well, it's the Minnesota Tourism Conference. It's a chance for the operations manager for the Iron Trail Motors Event-
It's a chance for the operations manager for the Iron Town Boys' Events Center to attend that conference, to try to attract some business and tourism and events for the Iron Town Boys' Events. That's the purpose of going down there for that.
And have we attended that in the past? And have we seen bookings from attending it in the past?
Never been invited to attend.
We've never been. This is the first time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And then item five point four, the travel request for our city administrator and city clerk.
My first question with it is, I'm curious why the price for the two are different, if we're attending the same conference? And then the second is, is this a required annual training, and what does that look like? And what does that mean? Thank you.
Pam?
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Bock Snyder, so the difference in price is because I have a discount at the hotel with a Hampton Group called Friends and Family. So I was able to book mine that way, so that's why the, that is cheaper. And then the, I was appointed as the MCFoA Region Two Director for this area. So I am required pretty much to attend the conference, as I have things that I have to do down there, as far as greeting new clerks. We have an evening for that. It's listed in the brochure of different events. I'm on the Entertainment Committee, the Decorating Committee, so there's things that we do. And I also have to present at some of the, or introduce at some of the trainings.
Thank you. Britt, would you say, what, your purpose in attending, is it the same requirement for you as well?
No, I'm not, I'm not the president like Pam is of the Region Two. It is the opportunity that I get to have to meet with other clerks and other, you know, things that we, we do. It's one of the only opportunities I get to go do. We don't have a lot of training because of, as administrators and clerks are often very, very busy. And the other training that is available that is specifically geared for administrators is usually in May, and it's always the worst time for us, citywide, because that's usually our audit. So I usually don't get to go to that one. This is the one I do get to go to, usually.
Perfect, thank you.
If I don't go, it's, I'm not, I'm not going to be, my feelings hurt or anything.
And is this built into the budget for you specifically to attend?
It is, it is, it is. My budget does include Ashley, my secretary, and I, and half of Sheri, and our travel budget includes expected travel for all that. We don't ever usually use it all, but it is there.
Okay, thank you. I'm curious if we would be able to, just for the purpose of the general public, can we vote on the two separately for Britt and Pam as well?
We can.
I would, I would ask that we do that. Do I need to make that a motion?
Okay, so the form of a motion would be, we'll just go, it's a part of the consent agenda, so we'll just repeat the consent agenda individually. We've approved the other parts of the consent agenda already, so we need to take a look and vote on item five point three and item five point four. So let's start with item five point three. Approve the travel request for Jim Hunt to attend the two thousand twenty-five Explorer Minnesota Tourism Conference in Minneapolis, Minnesota, February eighteenth and nineteenth, at a cost of three hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty cents.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Johnson. Is there support?
Support for discussion.
By Counselor Freely, for further discussion. Further discussion, Counselor Freely.
I'll be cautious, but I want to say that the decisions that we're making at this dais is to assist in the conducting of the business of the city of Virginia. It's not to appease all the taxpayers that come with concerns and complaints about the decisions that we make. And the decisions that we make are not intended to be an insult to your opinion. You have your right to your opinion, but we are making decisions based on what we feel is in the best interest of the city and to conduct the business of the city. So that's one thing that I want to state. And having been an educator for my career, I think it's absolutely imperative for us to go to these types of professional education opportunities to enhance our abilities to conduct the business of the city. Not to mention, I'd like to mention the fact that, like, I don't know why someone doesn't question, what is the ITMEC gaining for the community rather than losing constantly? I mean, we are getting statewide recognition and admiration from multiple communities that come to that facility and see how it's run and how it's provided for the services that are given to those people that come. I mean, from all over the state, especially hockey that I am familiar with, they're impressed with the staff, they're impressed with the facility, they're impressed with the community. And so that in and itself is a gain for the community in multiple ways beyond just the bottom line of what we're gaining or losing financially at that building. So with that being said, I just want to say that I support us moving forward to allow these people to go to these educational opportunities, because I think they're imperative to the running of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Freely. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, and I agree wholeheartedly with Counselor Freely. When we do not allow ourselves or others to learn, we are basically going backwards. I, I, I have attended multiple things in, in my career as well, and sometimes the social gatherings get more accomplished than the classroom events. One of the things that I know about our staff is they are all very careful about what they ask for, because they know we, the council is watching. So the, when they're asking to go, it is evident to me that they feel this is necessary and prudent to what they need in order to complete their jobs at the highest level possible. And our staff are some of the best in the state. So I will continue to support learning educational activities and conferences, knowing that our staff have done their best to eliminate any nonessential spending. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Since we're kind of, the, the items that were pulled were regarding our travel and travel budget. After this is done, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to review our travel policy, our current travel policy. I think last updated was twenty seventeen, so I'd like to make a motion after those three items are voted upon, to bring that to the committee of the whole for further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Paulson. Further discussion on this matter, Counselor Bock Snyder?
I didn't have anything additional.
Okay, so you just pulled it for a separate vote? Okay, very good. So it has been moved and supported to approve item three, is a travel request for Jim Hunt to attend the two thousand twenty-five Explorer Minnesota Tourism Conference. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Item five point four, approve the travel request for Britt C. Bennet and Pamela Bean to attend the MCFoA Annual Conference, March nineteenth through the twenty-first, with a cost of one thousand seventy-seven dollars and nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents, respectively. Counselor Bock Snyder?
Are we able to vote on Pam and Britt separately?
Okay. So the motion, your motion would be, Counselor Bock Snyder, is to, what would be your motion? If you want to, it's, the way it's stated in the consent agenda is to approve the travel request.
I'm just asking, do they have to be combined for the approval? Or can we take it as?
You can separate it out, so.
Yep, so.
Okay.
I make that a motion to separate the travel request.
The motion on the floor by Counselor Bock Snyder is to separate item five point two, travel between city administrator Britt C. Bennet and city clerk Pamela Bean. There's support for that.
Support.
Counselor Motley? Okay, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Roll call, please, Pam.
Can I ask for a clarification? We're voting on whether we're going to vote for it separately or voting approval of it?
Voting separately.
Oh.
It's the motion to vote separately. That was her motion, not Counselor Bock Snyder's motion. Roll call, please, Pam.
Johnson?
No.
Motley?
Yes.
Paulson?
Aye.
Yandich?
Aye.
Bock Snyder?
Aye.
Freely?
Sure.
Puffy?
Aye. Okay, so, looking for a motion with respect to item five point four, will separate the two based upon the motion that just passed. First, the travel request for Britt C. Bennet. Who moved?
Support.
Moved to approve for city administrator Britt C. Bennet to attend the MCFoA Annual Conference, March nineteenth through the twenty-first, at a cost of one thousand seventy-seven dollars. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Motley?
No.
Paulson?
Aye.
Yandich?
Aye.
Bock Snyder?
No.
Freely?
Aye.
Puffy?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Now, another motion, we proffered under five point four for Pamela Bean to attend the MCFoA Annual Conference, March nineteenth through the twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, at a cost of nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents. Who moved? Moved to approve by Counselor Freely. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, item six, appearances. There is no one scheduled to appear before the council today, so move to item number seven, unfinished business. Item seven point one, the clinic lease. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. May I make a motion to direct city staff to bring the hiring policy forward for review at the next committee of the whole? I mean, travel, I'm sorry.
Okay, motion by Counselor Paulson to direct staff to schedule the review of the travel policy at the next committee of the whole meeting.
Support.
Support by Counselor Bock Snyder. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I'm sorry, Counselor Johnson?
And I'm, I'm curious to know what portion or why we are looking at this policy.
Counselor Paulson, what are your reason for the request for the motion to do so?
Actually, since we were talking about it, we also have a new member of our elected body, as well as there was some travel that occurred at the, over the weekend, that did not have a travel request that came forward. So I would like to review our policy, and when any travel is taking place, a travel request should precede it by thirty days. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That was, so that was the purpose, Counselor Johnson. Do we have a motion and a support? Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please, Pam.
Paulson?
Aye.
Yandich?
Aye.
Bock Snyder?
Aye.
Freely?
Aye.
Puffy?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Motley?
Aye.
A motion passes six one, thank you. Okay, now we'll go to unfinished business, under item seven point one, the clinic lease. There has been, our legal counsel had to leave for another meeting, but there was a meeting today.
Yes.
With Mr. Modich and, and Dr. Modich and Sam Stone from Essentia Health with respect to that. So there was some additional discussion moving forward, and so.
There is, there is, Mayor, and I mean.
Yes, please, Britt.
We are ready to meet with the city council to make a position on our, our, I guess, it would be a closed session to make a position for the real estate transaction. So I would ask the council to consider a date to set a closed meeting that we can get together to discuss Essentia's proposal.
Councilor Motley?
Did we, is it too soon to say Tuesday, next Tuesday?
I don't think that's too soon.
Like, before the committee of the whole?
Well, it would be a special meeting, a special council meeting.
Well, if it's closed, would it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Like, do I need to make a motion?
I, I, please, let me walk that back. The recommendation in my discussion with Britt was that we have a special meeting. So if it comes right after the committee of the whole meeting, it, you know, may take a significant amount of time. It, it's not, we're not.
No, it may be better for a council meeting, so we'd have, we could do it a little earlier. If we could do it at three-thirty or so, because it's two hours, because this might take us some time to start through.
So you're recommending in two weeks, not next Tuesday?
Yeah, if that would be okay, if everybody.
Would that be amenable for maybe scheduling a, a special council meeting two weeks from today? Is that amenable to everyone? Form of a motion?
I'll make the motion to schedule the special meeting two weeks from today. Britt, what's your recommendation on the time?
Three thirty?
For three thirty? Okay, thank you.
And is there support? A motion by Counselor Motley, supported by Counselor Paulson, to set a special council meeting to discuss the clinic lease with Essentia Health. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number eight, eight point one, under discussion items, adopt a resolution designating the depositories for two thousand twenty-five, and I'll refer to Sheri Erickson, our finance director. Sheri?
This is mandatory every year, and it is a listing of our deposits for banking and investments.
And we're just designating where those go? We have to do that on an annual basis by law, it's required, so. Unless anybody has any other questions or comments looking for a motion to adopt the resolution designating the depositories as listed in your packet. Who moved? Moved to approve by Counselor Freely. Is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Bock Snyder? Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight point two, is adopt the resolution designating the Masaba Tribune as the official newspaper for two thousand twenty-five.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Motley. Is there support? Support by Counselor Freely. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Now that the Masaba Daily is, or whatever it's called now, Masaba Tribune is less than a daily newspaper, what happens in the future when they cut more? Like, what kind of newspaper do we need to be utilizing? I just want to have that on our radar as they, their services continue to be less and less.
And I believe there is a requirement, as you, you will, are being on the council for such a long period of time, that certain postings are required by law for us to hold meetings, and it has to be three days notice, but I'm going to refer to Pam, our city clerk, to give a little explanation. Pam?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe that some cities only have a once-a-week paper, like the Hometown Focus. So if it would come down to that, then I guess we would have more, two options. Obviously, with the Masaba Tribune now, it's easier to get our information in there, and so hopefully they don't cut any other days out, so.
Thank you, Pam.
Sure.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. It has been moved and supported to adopt the resolution designating the Masaba Tribune as the official newspaper for two thousand twenty-five. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item eight point three is approve the regional advisory committee, RAC, appointments for two thousand twenty-five. This is the communications piece for, one is for the fire EMS and the other for police. And it's something we do every year, and they serve on these communication boards for, the communication for law enforcement, and then there's a separate one for fire EMS. And this one here for the regional advisory committee, RAC, is for the fire department.
I will move the recommended appointments for the regional advisory committee, two thousand twenty-five.
Moved by Counselor Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Bock Snyder? Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item eight point four, approve the emergency communications board, the ECB appointments for two thousand twenty- for 2025.
I will move the recommendations for the appointments to the Emergency Communications Board, 2025.
Moved by Counsel Johnson. Is there support? By Counsel Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.5 is approve the radio users, the use, it's called the user board, appointments for 2025.
So moved.
Move to approve by Counsel Motley. Is there support? By Counsel Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.6, and thank you for your patience, Mr. Sepala. We're finally at 8.6, which is the Planning and Zoning Meeting from January 6, 2025. Item 8.6, approve the following variances, the following variance for Pohaki Leasing LLC at 80467 North. 8.6a, a setback of 10 feet where 30 feet is required for the front west yard of the property. And 8.6b, a setback of 10 feet where 20 feet is required for the rear east yard of the property. And this is recommendation for approval by Planning and Zoning.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Bachsneider, supported by Counselor Paulson. Further discussion? Counsel Johnson?
Thank you, Brandon, for continuing to invest in the city of Virginia and being supportive not only of the city but of the school district. We appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.7 is adopt resolution approving the hiring of some outdoor rink attendants. Finally got some applications in for that. That's a good thing.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counsel Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
By Counsel Freedle. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.8, we have recessed that meeting until another time. So, and that was to adopt a resolution regarding the appointing of a designated official. We're not prepared to move forward with that as of yet. So move on to 8.9. It's adopt the resolution for final payment to Ben Saba Batuminus for the Silver Lake Trail, Phase Three, in the amount of $6,121.14.
So moved.
Move to approve by Counsel Paulson. Is there support?
Support.
By Counsel Motley. Further discussion? Counsel Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Could, Brit, could you clarify which portion this is?
The portion of the trail that runs from 9th Avenue to 12th Avenue.
Did the lighting on that portion get fixed? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Johnson. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't see your light on. Please hold that in advance. Counsel Bachsneider?
Was this a grant-funded project as well? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Moved and supported. Further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item nine, committee reports. Item 9.1, the committee whole meeting that was held on January 7, 2025, turn this portion of our council meeting agenda over to our city administrator, Britsy Benes. Brit?
Thank you. On January 7, at our committee of the whole meeting, first one of the year. It was movement supported to approve Eric Mo to be appointed as our team leader floater position for the next two-year cycle.
Move to approve by Counsel Freedle, been supported by Counsel Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
It was movement supported to approve the unpaid leave of absence for a dual-role firefighter EMT through February 17, 2025.
Moved.
Moved to approve by Counsel Motley. Is there support?
Support.
By Counsel Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Sir Ross Fit, our public works director, was present to discuss the concrete crushing bids we had received to crush the existing concrete pile we have. It was moved and supported to approve the resolution to award the bid for concrete crushing in 2025 to Jacobson Gravel.
So moved.
A move to approve by Counsel Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
By Counsel Bachsneider. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to authorize staff to submit a letter of intent to request funding from Army Corps Fiscal Year 25, Section 569, Northeastern Minnesota Environmental Infrastructure Program for the ditching project.
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Freedle, been supported by Counsel Johnson. Is there any further discussion? We'll be leveraging some of our legislators to help move that request forward.
We are, because it got put into a big pile of everybody's in our area. And we're hoping that our legislative connections can move it forward.
Thank you.
Yes.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
At committee of the whole, we had a first glance of our MediaCom franchise contract renewal. We'd had some clarifying questions that we asked. Therefore, it was movement supported to direct staff to follow up on the questions from the council regarding the cable communications franchise ordinance.
Moved.
A move to approve by Counsel Paulson, supported by?
Brit.
Counsel Motley. Is there any further discussion?
And Mayor, I have sent the questions to our attorney, and I'm still waiting for the answers, but I will get them back to the council.
Thank you. They're forthcoming. It moved and supported. No other questions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And just to give a little update, I did talk to our representative, Teresa Sund, at MediaCom. And leaking is a real thing. It is a real problem that people sometimes have with old cable lines. And so if you are ever contacted by MediaCom saying that you have a leaking problem, they will work with you to come to your house and help you fix those with your lines and get them corrected. I do have a little blurbug on our Facebook page to talk about what leaking is and that it is a real thing, especially in places where the lines are really old, like Virginia.
Thank you.
Yep. We had discussion regarding the cannabis ordinance. It was movement supported to invite the Assistant St. Louis County Attorney to the cannabis public hearing, which was held today, to provide information on the updated rules and regulations. I don't need any action on that, thank you very much, though. And it was movement supported to provide written notification on the public hearing for cannabis to those affected in the commercial districts. And I did my best to notify everybody I could through multiple means of that hearing. We had quite a large discussion regarding the solid waste and the garbage truck that is being delivered this week. We had some discussion regarding our ordinance. It was movement supported to allow staff to update the solid waste ordinance and to come in line with the recommendations from the MPCA.
So moved.
A move to approve by Counsel Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Counsel Motley. And this is to allow staff to update the city's solid waste ordinance and come up with, make sure we're in line with the recommendations by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. Is there any further discussion? Counsel Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm wondering if we could back up after this vote to Brit's other item for discussion that was just above that, regarding the garbage truck. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we have a motion and support for that. Is there any further discussion on item H?
Yeah.
Yes. Counsel Freedle?
So my question would be, it seems this is a necessity to do, to come in compliance with the MPCA. But in doing so, I'm assuming that we would still be able to maintain our current garbage services.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I've been working on the ordinance this week, and there's a lot of things that we have not addressed in our ordinance, because it's probably never been a problem for us.
Would it require, like, changing from the 300 gallons to the 90 gallons?
No. The ordinance specifically states what to do about scavenging animal cremains or remains in the garbage dumpsters, things that we just haven't had a problem to deal with, and hopefully never do. But it's just the updated stuff we're missing. You know, our haulers license requirements are, the dollar amounts are obscenely low. I mean, we need some more insurance and liability information that we don't ask for.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, back to the previous information with respect to the garbage truck. Counsel Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Did we decide how we were going to pay for this truck? And has it been delivered? It has not been delivered yet? Okay, I thought it was coming this past Monday, yesterday. No, it has not been delivered yet. Okay, so my question is, did we figure out how we were paying for this?
Sherri?
I believe we mentioned it at the committee of the whole, that we will pay for it. It will be charged to the garbage fund enterprise, which will put it in a deficit.
So we decided that already?
That's what was discussed. So now here today, you get to choose what you're going to do.
There's nothing in our, there's, I don't see anything on the agenda for that. Am I missing it?
Was there a motion? Oh, because there wasn't a motion. So I guess I'm a little confused at your question.
I'm just wondering how we decided we were going to pay for this. Did we, I know we had discussion, but we're getting delivery of the truck, but we don't know how we're going to pay for it. But what was discussed is we will pull money that we don't have out of the enterprise fund, because the enterprise fund is negative?
Sherri, what's the balance of the enterprise fund?
Roughly around $48,000. I do not have the total dollar figure on top of my head, but roughly $48,000 is in there, which will not cover a $300,000 truck.
Right. So I'm just trying to understand what we determined how we are paying for this, once we take delivery of it.
We'll definitely have to raise rates of some sort.
I think what we're doing, Counsel Paulson, if I may, go ahead.
Sorry, Mayor. It's in the minutes. It says this will be further discussed at a future meeting. So.
But we are taking possession of something we don't know how we're going to pay for? And Sherri, I'm not looking to you.
No, I understand.
I just, I guess I thought we were going to have.
We haven't received it yet.
Standing on where we're paying for it. And should we be taking possession of something we don't know how we're going to pay for yet?
No. No, well, yeah, this is.
So I'm concerned about that, and it's not on our, in our agenda for this evening. Can we delay the delivery of the truck?
We can refuse delivery. That's an option.
I will make a motion that we refuse delivery of the garbage truck until we figure out how we're going to pay for the truck.
There's a motion by Counsel Paulson to decline to take possession of the garbage truck, refuse truck, until we find a way in which we're going to pay for it or determine if it's necessary for us to even purchase it in the first place or take possession of it. Is there support?
Support.
By Counsel Freedle. Is there any further discussion? Counsel Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I have several concerns about that, including the legality of refusing delivery of a truck that we ordered and determined how to pay for when we ordered it. We made, we signed a contract. I think we should not refuse delivery without legal counsel, as it could cost us more in the future. And again, I guess I would want to know when we ordered this truck, probably a year or more ago, what was decided. Then I don't remember specifically. I think it was supposed to come out of the enterprise fund, but because of the things that have happened and needing to buy other stuff, that enterprise fund is not where it's at. It seems more prudent to pay for the truck, figure out internally what we need to do, and then if we need to sell it or we don't use it, to take care of it that way. I have serious concerns about refusing delivery and what that does to the reputation of the city, to future manufacturers and future business parties. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Johnson. So we have process in place, looking at the garbage service that we have. This is an ancillary tangent part. We're looking at that, determining whether or not we're going to purchase this garbage truck, because there's no money in the enterprise fund. And the reason that the enterprise fund is depleted so much is because of all the costs associated with providing the garbage service, salary and benefits, the equipment repairs, all those kinds. Anything that has to do with refuse collection comes from that enterprise fund. Our rates are woefully lower than anybody around, okay? So two things have to happen. Rates have to be raised, one way or the other, whether it's by a private hauler, the rates will go up, or whether it's from the city service that we provide, the rates have to go up in order to accommodate and replenish the enterprise fund. And that the goal and objective, I think, is if we take possession of this truck, the rates are going to have to go up anyway to help to replenish that fund, you know, so it, so over the course of a year or so, after making those collections, I can't remember how much money we collect if by raising those rates. I think we had a rate adjustment presentation a while back. So those are our options. So the motion on the floor right now is to not take possession of this garbage truck. So further discussion there. Counsel Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify. I'm just saying, I think we should decline delivery until we figure out how we're going to pay for it, not decline it altogether, but just decline it and decline the delivery until we understand how we're going to pay for it. And if we can't, then we do need to have a hard conversation. But at this point, it would be decline delivery until we understand how we can, we don't, we don't have the money to pay for this. We only have $48,000 in the fund. So, and the rest of the $252,000 was not budgeted for fiscal year 2025, although it was supposed to have been split between fiscal years 2022 and 2020, excuse me, 2023 and 2024. That's what the 2022 resolution states. So I am, my motion stands to decline delivery upon us understanding where we're going to get the money.
So the motion on the floor, moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Counsel Bachsneider, then over to Counsel Freedle. Counsel Bachsneider?
Thank you. I also have concerns that I would assume our contract would say something that if you refuse delivery, that you would incur a fee. I don't know if anyone is a Brit, if anyone's feverishly looking up that contract and what it says. And if you know that information, I don't feel comfortable supporting the motion unless I know what the contract says about refusing delivery. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counsel Freedle?
I have to admit, it was a revelation to me tonight to find out that we do continue to recycle cardboard for commercial purposes at the expense of all taxpayers in the city when I thought the entire program was abandoned. So that's disconcerting to me to know that. And so in my mind right now, we don't need that truck. We shouldn't have ordered it. And we need to find a way to back out of that deal, if it's possible. And I would think that.
That's not a recycling truck that's coming. It's a garbage truck that's coming. Difference.
I thought it was a recycling truck we just talked about.
Nope. Ross Fit needs a, the garbage truck is coming. And Ross Fit had mentioned he's also, if we're going to continue to offer cardboard recycling to minimize the tipping fees that we pay for the garbage, is why we do it still, we would need a new recycling truck. That's future purchase. We don't, what's coming now is a garbage truck.
Which we need.
We need.
But we still need to figure out how to pay for it.
Correct. We raised the rates in '23 with the intent that we would have enough money to cover the costs. The tipping costs exceeded what we expected, which ate all our profit.
Yeah, tipping fees that are, that the colony has.
And the only reason we kept doing the cardboard recycling is because once those cardboard bins are no longer there, they're going to go in the dumpster. And the tipping fees will increase again, because we're going to have more stuff in there.
Be very helpful.
Well. One interested, well. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Paulson, then Counselor Motley.
Thank you. I believe it's McQueen, I'm trying to find the contractor or the contract. And I believe the, when we did ask that question to Mr. Ross Fit, it was indicated that there was no penalty. And I believe that that, that is the case. It's not like it's specked out for the City of Virginia. It was just an order. But I don't know how we can, if the funds weren't allocated properly in 2023 and 2024, how we can expect to get that much out of the budget in 2025.
Mayor?
Yes, one moment, please. Sherry.
Thank you. I want to make sure that the public is not misunderstood when you say funds were not allocated. There was no funds in 2023 to allocate $150,000 in '23, no funds in 2024 to allocate and have the auditor restrict that money when there's no money. I can't restrict something that's not there and carry it over.
Okay, I under, Mayor, if I may, I understand that, completely understand that. This council should have been made aware that that was not an option and that that garbage truck should have been canceled and stopped when we found out that we did not have the funds. So that, Sherry, I appreciate the answer, but that's, that's, that's a non-answer. This council should have been notified that the funds were depleted in 2023 and 2024, which is what the resolution stated, which is what I voted yes to buy the truck based on those two criteria. And if those criteria were not going to be able to be met, this council should have been notified, and we would have canceled that truck.
I believe we tried to cancel the truck, did we?
Pardon?
By the council in August of last year that we would need to look at something different because we weren't going to have enough funds.
Okay, and what was decided then? To leave the truck on order and figure it out at a later date and kick the can down the road?
It was decided, Ross Fit texted me.
Okay, so right now, there's a motion on the floor to not take delivery of the garbage truck. That's the motion. So let's discuss that piece and then make, then to take a vote. Counselor Johnson.
Well, I think it is relevant to that vote that this council is ultimately the authority and responsible for knowing that. We see budget sheets every year, month, we get, there's monthly budget meetings that go over all the entrepreneur funds, all the restricted funds. It all exists, it's already there. That we did not take action is the responsibility of the elected officials in this room. Thank you.
Counselor, Counselor Motley.
I'm all for refusing the garbage truck delivery, but I echo Counselor Bachsneider on the concerns of, what are we looking at? What does that look like if we refuse it? And we have talked about the garbage, and we know we don't make any money on the garbage, and we're undercharging the taxpayers, which is also part of the problem, which is why we're having garbage problems. Which is why I thought we were holding off on the, talking about the purchase of the garbage truck and how we're going to pay for it. My understanding was that we were going to maybe push this to the cowl the next Tuesday meeting, when other topics of garbage are going to be presented. So I'm fine with holding off on any votes of the garbage truck until we talk about the garbage next Tuesday at the Committee of the Whole. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Motley. The motion on the floor is to refuse the truck. It's motion, that's what the motion is. It's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Paulson.
Thank you. Again, the motion is to decline the delivery of the truck until we can figure out how we can pay for it. That's not saying we're declining it overall, it's just pushing it off. If we have the Committee of the Whole discussion, maybe that will solve for X. I'm not really sure.
Yeah, that's the motion on the floor.
But however, the minute the city takes possession and it moves off of that lot, we probably lose $50,000 if we, if we go to a different type of garbage service and then have to list it under surplus. So if we take possession, we're losing money regardless. We might lose money on a, on a contract, but the minute that it leaves that lot and we're in possession of it and we change the garbage service, we probably lost at least a minimum of $50,000 because that has to be sold as surplus, is that correct? Or negotiated in a lease? But we still don't know how we're going to pay for it.
Well, at the last Committee of the Whole meeting, our attorney did say if we, if we were going to take possession of this truck and however the garbage service is metted, whatever vote we take, it would have to be sold as surplus.
So you're going to lose money, that's what that means to me. So I'm just asking for a hold, to decline the delivery until we figure out what we're doing. And if that discussion happens at the Committee of the Whole level, I'm comfortable waiting until that point, which is Tuesday. It's one week from today. It's not very long.
Yeah, that's the motion.
That's my, not saying we are overall flat refusing it, just let's have this conversation and, and understand either A, how we're going to pay for it, or if we go to contract garbage service, this is, this might be a scenario. Maybe it sits on the lot until someone else can take possession of it. So I'm just, I'm still very upset that I voted on something. And Counselor Johnson, I fully understand what you're saying, but when we go and we look at those enterprise funds and there is supposed to be an allocation and it isn't in there, then it necess, it would have to come from the general fund, which would mean a levy. And that is something that our city staff does need to come forward with discussion as we go forward with having our finance meetings monthly to talk about. So this is, should have been one of those things that should have been brought to the attention of the council. I don't, I mean, yes, we do meet and we have those financials in front of us, but unless we actually have the discussion, how are we supposed to know if that money was allocated or pulled when it wasn't, Brit? And so we had that discussion further. We didn't know what we were going to do, but we are now in this quandary today. So that's why I want to make the motion to defer the delivery, decline delivery until we figure this out.
Yeah, that's the motion's on the floor. Is there any further discussion on that motion?
Could it include pending legal counsel? I mean, he talked about surplus, but we don't want to have to sell it. We just don't want to have it. So that would be something you could amend, if necessary.
Well, that'll be part of the moving forward as far as that goes. Counselor Beyondich.
Thank you. Is there a way to track that, to track the delivery? I mean, do you have a way to see or know if it's been shipped, where it is?
I can find out. I don't have that information myself, but I can find out tomorrow.
Thank you. And, and just, I just have to say this for me. I have been asking for finance meetings since I got on this council. I've been turned down consistently. These finance meetings that we started having are because I kept pushing, and we did not start having them till a few months ago. So we never have had a finance committee, and that's what I've always wanted because we need to dig into this so we understand it. Thank you.
So the motion on the floor is to move forward to the next Committee of the Whole meeting, where we'll discuss, it will get more information from Public Works Director, get more information from our city attorney, find out from McQueen what the statuses of, of the delivery, if there's any costs associated with that. All those things could be, information could be provided to the council at the next Committee of the Whole meeting as requested. But the motion on the floor is to not take delivery until we have that information and make that decision of last Committee of the Whole meeting. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Bachsneider.
Where was the truck being built? I'm just thinking if we thought, if we were anticipating delivery on Monday, I'm wondering if it was leaving on Monday and if it's already off the lot and things like that. So, thank you.
We'll find that out. Counselor Johnson.
Just to clarify, is this a simple majority or a supermajority vote? Is it a three-four or is it a five-two?
Well, I believe it's a five-two vote, a supermajority of voting to spend money. But if, if we already allocated the money or taken, we're taking possession of it, so it would be just a regular majority vote then.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Motley.
Pam, could you please read back Counselor Paulson's motion?
Okay, Counselor Paulson, I'm not sure if this is what you, both of you wanted added in on the motion. Move by Counselor Paulson, supported by Counselor Freely to decline delivery of the garbage truck and request further information from the city attorney and to discuss at the next Committee of the Whole meeting.
That's correct. Okay, it has been moved and supported in that regard. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, roll call, please, Pam.
Beyondich?
Aye.
Bachsneider?
Aye.
Freely?
Aye.
Cuffy?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Motley?
Yes.
Paulson?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes six to one, thank you. Next item, please.
Thank you. It was moved and supported to approve the resolution to transfer funds from the investment account to the 4M Fund for up to $4,617,432.
Thank you.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson, supported by Counselor Motley. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
It was, we went into closed session to discuss the Rock Ridge Youth Hockey Association Facilities Use Agreement and the Contract for Animal Control Services with the Masabi Humane Society. When we reconvened, it was moved and supported to approve Brian Silbert, Park and Recreation Director, to begin negotiations with Rock Ridge Youth Hockey for the 2025 contract.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Bachsneider, is there support? By Counselor Beyondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
It was moved and supported to request the city attorney advise the council on a recommendation for the Masabi Humane Society contract.
So moved.
A move to approve by Counselor Motley, is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Bachsneider, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Further items from that meeting, thank you.
Thank you. We moved item 10, Commission Liaison Reports. Is there any city council or elected official that would like to present a Commission Liaison Report this evening? Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been asked to share from the colleges, I've been pulling up my email, that on Martin Luther King Day, Monday, January 20th, there's a free event at Minnesota North College Masabi Range Campus, presentation and various speakers at noon in the theater, which is on the west side of the building, with children's activities in the gym. Hope folks can get out and honor Mr. King. I also want to report that, if you haven't seen it in the news, the North Star Elementary School is truly being an excellent community member. They have worked very hard on shoveling sidewalks. They are doing some, a lot of internal things. It's their catchphrase, if I remember right, is "our community, our responsibility." And so the three through sixth graders there are doing a phenomenal job of learning what it's like to have responsibility and be a part of a community as they're moving forward. And I'm just going to do a little tease. I'm going to take just a little bit of the library thunder here that February is I Love to Read Month, and if you do not have a Virginia Public Library card, you're going to want to get one, and you're going to want to read, and I'm just going to say 10,000 hours, and we'll leave it for that till we get closer. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Counselor Johnson. Any other Commission Liaison Reports? I just got an EE text message, it was a while ago, that MediaCom no longer, doesn't have picture or sound for the current council meeting, so we're not being recorded. So it's on YouTube, but, you know, so. Where are we at, Bill? It's on the air? Okay. Maybe it's, maybe it's at residence, so MediaCom is not working, so. All right, thank you. Department head reports, number 11. Any department head like to give a report today? Okay, Brit, you got anything? Do you have anything, Pam? Sherry, any, any reports?
January is a real busy month right now, so we're going through, the W2s are out. We're working on the 1099s. And we have some OSHA requirements at the end of the month. We also have state budget summary requirement. We also have a few other reports into the county that are due. And it's going by, it's flying by fast, so scheduling meetings right now is a really small window to schedule something in January with all the requirements. After that, we'll get ready for the audit.
Okay, thank you. Jenny Rubenier, Community Development Director, Jenny.
Thank you, Mayor. I did just receive an update today about the city's required floodplain ordinance that we need to have enacted, and we did get conditional approval of that by the DNR. That's the first step in moving that forward. So I'll be moving some information forward for council and the public as soon as I can regarding that ordinance, and then we will need to set a public hearing for that. So I just wanted to give a quick update.
Very good, thank you, Jenny. You have a public hearing for that?
We will, and we have to have it enacted by March of 2025.
Okay, very good, thank you, thank you. Okay, any other department head reports before we move on? Jody Grabanowski, our library director, Jody.
Good evening, everyone. So winter reading has started, which is something that Counselor Johnson referred to. So I will give you a teaser, 10,000 hours, but I will give you more in two weeks. So I'll be back two weeks from today to tell you how you can help with that 10,000 hours. Right now, you stop by the library, you can pick up your winter reading packet. The Friends of the Library did an amazing job of some really cool packets that you could win. And if you finish your bingo, you also get a book. So the goal of this is to keep you reading, especially in the winter when, yeah, nobody really wanted to go outside today because it was cold. We are kind of getting back into our regular swing of scheduling, so our youth services person has started baby story time. So those are at 11 o'clock on Tuesdays, and then we have family story time at 10:30 on Fridays. We are doing, as you know, early out on Wednesday, so we've been doing some after-school programming. The next one is tomorrow, it's Zen Tangle. It's kind of a combination of origami and meditative type with the pattern, so anybody can drop by and do that, all ages, all abilities. So if you can't, we have people to help, so. And you might even get some help from some really helpful fourth and fifth graders, as Counselor Johnson pointed out. Also this week, on the 16th, AEOA SNAP benefits will be at the library. They're going to do a session just to get you some updates on that. And then the following week, we do have book club. But also, we are working with a local genealogy person. If you have questions about your family history or want to know, like you have hit all of the dead ends and you need more resources, she's going to be at the library from 4:00 to 5:45 on the 23rd, and she will answer those questions. If you want some new books to read, come to the book club. You don't have to read the book, you can just come and hang out, and they're usually, I'll give you all sorts of cool information. So that's for the next two weeks. If any of you would like the winter reading packet, I did bring the one that is, that has some more challenging bingo in it for you. So, yeah, that's what I have for you right now.
Hey, thank you. A quick question. What are the library hours of operation now?
So we are open 11 to 6, Monday through Thursday, 10 to 5 on Friday, and 10 to 2 on Saturday.
Thank you very much, Jody. Okay, any other department head reports this evening? Item number 12, the council reports. Does any city council have a council report they'd like to give this evening? Counselor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. In light of Pam letting us know we kind of are on a timely deadline with the cannabis ordinance, I would like to move that discussion forward to the next Committee of the Whole meeting for further review and consideration, including the email that. that was sent out by Pam, uh, to the council from myself. That would be a motion. Thank you.
A motion by Counselor Paulson to move the cannabis discussion to the next committee of the whole meeting, is there any further, uh, is there support for that?
Support.
By Counselor Motley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, no other reports? No, ma'am. Of course, come on up. Yeah, well, well, I'll, I'll let you come up. Well, I didn't want any interruptions until we got this thing done. You're welcome to come up and give a minute or two, if you like. Go ahead.
My name is Kathy Katie. Um, I'm of the understanding that you want citizens to come and speak and give input at meetings?
Yes.
Yes? So I would like to publicly call out Gary and Stephen for mansplaining to me the stuff that I talked about. So, that's it.
Pretty, thank you. Okay, no other business?
Can I get clarification?
Yes, please, so Counselor Freedle?
I've never heard the term mansplaining, I don't know what that means.
I don't either.
I've never heard of it.
Okay.
You're not going to provide that information to me?
Uh, please turn on the mic and-
Mansplaining is when a man over, overtalks a woman, and you were saying, why do we have to talk about the bad stuff? Why can't we talk? You were mansplaining the things that I was saying, and I don't appreciate it. You can look it up, I think you should look it up.
I disagree completely.
Okay. No other business to come before the call, so I mean, today, we have a lot of work at the next committee of the whole meeting to do, apparently. We'll adjourn our council meeting to our next council meeting, which is scheduled for Tuesday, January 28, 2025, at 5:30 PM. Thank you, everyone. We stand adjourned. Good night.